He did send it. I mean, I know I got it.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bogota Board of Education for Tuesday, August 29th, 2023. Please stand for the flag symbol. Thank you, Board. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Bogota Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Bogota Borough Hall communicated by letter to the record filed with the clerk of the Borough of Bogota and posted on the Bogota Board of Education website. Mr. Erfan, roll call.
Mrs. Alvarez?
President.
Mr. Alvarez?
President.
Mr. Chavez?
President.
Mrs. Cruz?
President.
Mr. Navarro?
President.
Mrs. Olivo?
Present.
Mr. Ortega?
Present.
Ms. Ruckett is absent. Mr. Miranda?
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you, Erfan. For the record, Mrs. Ruckett had to fly an emergency to California work duties. She may attempt to log in, but just in case, time is offset. Also present, our superintendent Damian Kennedy. We no longer have Mr. William Sukis, School Business Administrator, Board Secretary Erfan Efsil, Assistant Board Secretary Elizabeth Ruiz, and no student representative as they're joined their rest, little left over their summer. Moving on to 2.1, opening the floor to hearing on citizen on agenda items only. Do I have a motion to move hearing on citizens?
Motion.
So that would be Mr. Chavez and Mrs. Olivo as a second, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm integrating. Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any member of the public who wish to express concerns or ask questions on behalf of the agenda, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address. Mr. Kennedy, anyone online, anyone person? Since I have no one online or any of those present raising their hand, I'm going to move to close hearing on citizens of citizen on agenda items only. Do I have a motion?
Olivo.
Miss Olivo, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ortega, is that you?
Yes, sir.
Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the section of 3.1 of our agenda superintendent's report. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Okay, some updates first. So, summer project updates. STEEN repointing has been completed. The Bixby floor project was also completed. If you happen to had the opportunity to drive by Bixby, you can see the playground has been started and hopefully will be done within the next two weeks. So our students there will now have a playground just like the STEEN students. Also, our pre-K office, an 18 to 21-year-old classroom. Fire panel was installed. We also have access doors being installed as well as cameras. Furniture will be delivered on Friday. Next up is obtaining our CO from the city, from the borough, and then the DOE visit. So we're hoping to have our 18 to 21-year-old program up and running within the next two weeks. For the time being, they will be meeting in the classroom in the high school. I am also pleased to inform you that we have successfully obtained our CUSAC pass letter. CUSAC, they come in every three years and they really open up our hood and check everything from test scores to curriculum to financial reports to board governance. The county comes in and they spend a lot of time here. And I'm very happy to say that for the second time in two tries as superintendent, we have passed again. Prior to my time as superintendent, I can remember close to 15 years where we never passed CUSAC the first time. So this is really a great testament to our district, to our board, to our teachers and our administrators. So congratulations to everyone on that. Also, some more good news. Mr. Chang has secured a new grant, the Healthy Meals Grant, for $150,000. These funds will be dedicated to enhancing our kitchen facilities, encompassing new range burners, freezer, refrigerator, heater cabinets, serving containers, and even an innovative indoor flex farm yielding a variety of fresh produce. We're going to be, we're very excited to introduce this farm-to-table initiative in our new 18 to 21-year-old program. So they're going to help maintain that as part of the program. Also, tomorrow, we welcome our new teachers for new teacher orientation. All staff will report back to the district on Tuesday, September 5th, for two full days of PD. That is also a time that we try to bring the whole district and the board together on that Tuesday morning at 8:15 to about 9:30 where we get together, everybody in district, secretaries, custodians, maintenance, teacher aides, tech, everybody. We like to get together to start out the year together, talk about what our plans are for the year, brag a little bit about what we've done over the last couple of years, and also really start the year off right. So I will be sending out a formal invitation to all the board members, but if you can free up some time next Tuesday morning, we will be meeting in the high school gym. Also, on this agenda, I do have to mention that we received Mr. Deruppo's retirement notice. Mr. Deruppo has been in the district, I think, over 20-plus years, a big part of athletics and in the gym as well. So he has set a date for January 1st, 2024. So I think next month we will go out and start looking for a new AD. Lastly, we've been working over the summer with our architects and professionals to move forward on this referendum. A lot of plans have been been put together. We're looking to meet with the town to review those plans for anything that the town will need to approve so we can move forward. But look for in September, maybe the second September meeting, we're going to give a big presentation of where we are in that progress to show you some of the designs and show you to make sure you're getting on our website and seeing everything from timelines and money and all that stuff. So be on the lookout for that. And then lastly, the state requires us to report testing scores within 60 days of receiving them. That timeline fell in the summer, so I do have to report our junior NJGPA tests and Axis Farrell's test today. That's usually something that we do in October, but the county's been very clear on getting this done before September 1st. So I am going to take, you know, 10, 15 minutes here just to review where we are and talk about where we plan on going. So I have to present. Okay, so this is the NJGPA, which was taken by our current seniors and last year's juniors. So this is the, we have four tests that we have to report on each year. Right now, we're going to be reporting on the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment and the Axis Farrell's. But first up is the Graduation Proficiency Assessment. All right, this is for all 11th grade students. And what they ended up taking is literally in 11th grade, they take ELA 10 standards and Algebra I and Geometry standards. Most of our current juniors every year are in Algebra II by that time, but this is how it's done. And this is a federal requirement, and that's we have to meet it. This year, so there's been a lot of talk about this, but in the past, the score was 750. This year, they cut off the score to make it 725. So what we're going to do is I want to make sure that we understand that when we review this because the data is skewed a little bit because last year's score was 750 and this year's score is 725. So I want to make that very clear. But we do have a lot to be happy about. Also, understanding last year, participation rates were over 90%. 83 students took the ELA, 85 students took the math. This also includes added district students, right? We get, we get their scores, even though we don't teach them, they count towards our final scores. So what I really want to brag about this year is our ELA scores. We scored over 90% of our students taking that test passed this year. The state graduate, the state rate was 80%, all right? I am really looking forward to when these scores come out statewide and even in Bergen County because I'm going to guarantee you that 90% is up there with anyone in Bergen County, which is very good for our district. So we should be very proud of that. Math scores where we have to continue to improve. Last year, 43%. The state was 55%, right? But we did have growth there that we're going to show you. So in ELA, last year's ELA, the state, right? So doesn't matter what the score is, but last year's ELA score, the state scored 40%. The district scored 26%. So we were 14 points behind the state last year at that 750 cutoff. This year, when they moved it to 725, we were at 90% and the state is at 80%. So that is tremendous growth. That is the data that we need to see that what we are doing in the ELA is working and we will continue to do that. All right, last year in math, the state was, the state was 49% and we were 36%, right? So that's about 13 and a half percent. And this year it was 55 versus 44. So we did see a little bit of growth there, about 11% that we're only behind this year. All right, because of FERPA rules, we cannot, we cannot introduce all ethnic and races because if it's less than 10 students, all right, and being a small district with only 84, 90 kids taking it, you can identify certain groups. So as you can see there, graduation ready is that 725. So 90% overall, female was 97, male was 84%, Hispanic-Latino was 90%, and white was 85%. So those students passed there. So here's another good thing that we look at. Non-economic, economic disadvantaged students was 93%. Economic disadvantaged students was 87%. So there's not a major gap there between those two groups, which we were happy to see. And then student with IDPs was 73% of our students passed, for students without 94%. And anywhere you see that FERPA, that number came in under. Next up was our math. And again, this is something that we continue to have to work on is our math. Overall, 43%, so female 37% and male was 48%. Hispanic and Latino was 40% and white was 50%. Non-economic disadvantaged students, 51%, economic disadvantaged students, 35%. Students with IDPs was 20% passed versus 48% without IDPs. So observations on the ELA. We have above-average ELA proficiency, significant positive trends in ELA over two-year period, right? So the Bogota growth to 64%, that's the two different numbers that were skewed. But what we looked at was and how we were able to get some information on this, our growth versus the state growth. We were 22% growth compared to last year, which is a big deal for us. So we were very happy about that. In the ELA readiness was 13 below the state average. This year, we were 9% above it. So we're going to continue to provide structured writing instruction, opportunities for students, continue to provide after-school tutoring and summer instruction for struggling students, and continue to reinforce structure, strong instructional routines, and continue to support ELA teachers in their instruction. Math, below state average in graduation readiness. Positive trend in math over two years, right? But we're looking at the differences. We grew 3% higher than the state, all right? Not enough instruction time in Algebra I, right? And what we need to also remember is with these current juniors, that was the first year that we were back in the building after COVID where it was virtual. Students didn't have to be in the building if they didn't want to. And in the high school, I know for a fact that there was no more than 25 to 30 kids in the building that first year when we came back. So we knew this was going to be a problem. So this is something that we are attacking this year. But we're going to focus on Algebra and Geometry readiness in grades eight through 10. Stricter Algebra I curriculum pacing to ensure all standards are taught. Increase Algebra I instruction time in eighth and ninth grade. So what we are going to do is something that we did maybe 10 years ago, we're going to make Algebra I a two-year class. Algebra I now will begin in the eighth grade and then they will finish it in ninth grade. Our honors track will still continue on their track where they are finishing Algebra I in eighth grade and taking geometry as freshmen. But what we want to do is give these kids more time to get to all the standards. So that is a big thing that we will be doing, but we will also continue providing tutoring and summer instruction for struggling students. All right, then this real quick is our Axis Farrell's. And there's really not much to report back here because of the FERPA, but it's based off of a 2.0 to 4.5. And you'll see that. Another big thing is that ELS students are now being referred to as MLS, MLLS students, multi-language learners, because these students are coming in, speaking another language already, and because they don't speak English sometimes, you're like, they are already speaking languages. They just have to learn how to speak English. All right, some of the languages that we're dealing is mostly Spanish at 90%, but as you can see, we do have a couple other languages that are starting to populate our demographics. So real quick, this is the test participation. This is something that we just need to look at. Over the years, from 2020 to 2023, our numbers, what I want you to look at is the last column here, where in 2020, we had 62 students tested that were considered ESL students. That number rose to 109 last year. I'm sorry, the year before, last year at 107, right? But what we're seeing is, is that we're seeing the growth in the high school, right? So that is something that we are recognizing because when a kid's in first and second grade, it's a lot easier to help them, to teach them English. But when they come as juniors and sophomores and freshmen, it becomes a tougher task. But we have been doing a good job with that. All right, and then just real quick here is our Axis for scores. We've had growth every year, but the big one that we're looking at is the composite. It was up 2% from last, two points from last year, but this overall here. Some trends, MLL population remains almost the same for the past two years, seeing more older students entering Bogota. Older students acquire language differently than younger students. So that often takes more time and practice to reach proficiency. All right, analysis and recommendation, provide explicit writing instruction, training for teachers, more opportunities for speaking and practice within class and at home. Continue to provide explicit reading instruction to build upon strong growth. Provide mentorship opportunities. So this is another thing that we started last year and going to continue, our Check and Connect Mentor Program. We are going to make sure that those ESL students are coordinated with an adult that will speak Spanish, that will reach out to their parents, will help them understand the process here in Bogota to make sure that they're getting all the necessary programs and everything that we have to offer. A lot of those parents won't come forward. So what we're going to go do is go out and reach out to them. Also, we're going to make a more, more strides and we budgeted more money to give them more real-life experiences by getting them on different field trips to see different things because a lot of those students sometimes just go to school and if it's not to work, it's to home. So what we want to do is make sure that we're showing them other things outside of Bogota and what else is out there. And that is the testing presentation. If anyone has any questions, please let me know.
I have a quick question on the kitchen grant?
Yeah.
That you were talking about. Is that only going to be used here?
Well, the kitchen is only here. All our food mostly is made here and then shipped out, but the the serving trays and things like that will be for the other schools and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
If anyone else has any other questions regarding that? No?
No one else? Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I also want to thank the board on the CUSAC, as you know how important it is for the image and the processes that we go through. Sometimes it's, they think it's solely the Board of Education, but board members as well. Your timely, your timely filings, your timely superintendent evals, your timely reporting and showing up, right? That all plays a part into that score. And to nail it, it's a good thing. So thank you to the board. I know it's tough to to coexist with families and personal things, but thank you for that. I do, as you probably all know, to my right, we're empty and we should probably never proceed in meetings and discussions without legal presence. Mr. Sukis was appointed to the bench as an honor, the judge, and you all know, and and we congratulate him on the board. He was our main contact and he he guided us through some serious hurdles and bumps that we overcame. So I want to thank him for that. But because of that, I think you all know, we studied, we went out for RFP for attorney, what, a little over 30 days ago?
Yeah, it was sent July 20.
July 20. So we put it out and we did get some, we leave that up to the negotiation committee, which consists of three members and myself. And they came back with some recommendations and it turns out that everything played its part. It's a bigger firm than what we had in the past, which was more of a one-member contact. And the recommendation is in some paperwork, I wanted to move, it's on the agenda, 8.24, move it up on the agenda so we can proceed with our meeting professionally and always have advice. So I needed, I guess I needed a motion to move it? Is that proper, you would call it? Can I have a motion to move 824 up to the top?
To move 8.1 to the top of the?
8.24. Do I have a second?
Olivo.
Miss Olivo, any, okay, any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Let me just pick up 824. Big agenda, I apologize. Okay, so moving on to 8.24, approval of appointment of board attorney. Whereas the Board of Education has a need to retain an attorney to serve in the role as counsel for the Board of Education to handle and address all legal matters of the Board of Education. And whereas the Board of Education issued a request for proposal RFP 24-04 for the position of the Board Counsel, Labor Relations Counsel, Construction Procurement Counsel, and Special Education Counsel, and evaluated total of six applicants, admissions based on relative experience, qualifications, and who will provide the highest quality of service at fair competitive price. Right, Mr. Erfan? And whereas the Board of Education wished to appoint Thomas Cobin, the law firm of Chason, Lamparello, Mallon, and Capuzo PC to serve as counsel for all purposes effective immediately. Now therefore be it resolved that Thomas Cobin of the law firm of CLMC be hereby appointed Board Attorney for the purposes effective immediately, purposes effective immediately in the amount of $165, $165 per hour for the period from August 29th, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, not to exceed $60,000. And be it further resolved that Thomas Cobin of Law Firm of CLMC shall submit the Board of Education a contract for services and such other documentation as customary required to be submitted by the Board of Education Attorney. Do I have a motion?
Motion, John.
Mr. Ortega, Mr. Navarro, is that a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Do I need a roll call, Erfan, or was that?
Yeah.
You want to do a roll call?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez? Mrs. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruckett absent. Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Passes. Mr. Cobin? Would like to welcome you.
And quickly for the record, one of the things that really kind of sparked, I think, the committee's attention is that, as we all know, a big part of the population in Bogota voted in favor of the referendum and there's some agreements and some things we're going to really dive into. And Mr. Cobin and the firm actually brings some experience, I think more than just some, to play. So it's a big time for Bogota. It's a big change for Bogota. And we needed all hands on decks because as you know, we volunteer, but we put a lot of time in, it's hard. So thank you, Mr. Cobin, and this is your board.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I really look forward to working with all of you.
Welcome.
My pleasure.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
I think you have a, if you want to copy it, just in case you need something. We're on, we're moving on to 4.3. All right, moving on to 4.3, approval of the agenda items 4.1 through 4.2. Do I have a second? Do I have a motion?
Olivo.
Mrs. Olivo, do I have a second? Mrs. Alvarez, any board discussion? Mr. Erfan?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
I would like to abstain as I was not here for that meeting.
Sure. Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
I'd like to move to 5.1, suspending bylaw 0131 and approved policies and regulations in one reading. Do I have a motion to approve 5.1?
Cruz?
Mrs. Cruz, do I have a second?
Chavez.
Mr. Chavez, any board discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfan.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez? Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Moving on to Resolution 6.2, which is the approval for agenda items 6.1 through 6.27. Do I have a motion to approve 6.27?
Motion?
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second?
Olivo.
Mrs. Olivo, any board discussion? Erfan?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez? Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. Moving on to 738 of the personnel portion of the agenda, approval of agenda items 7.1 through 737. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 738?
Motion Chavez?
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second?
Motion Cruz?
Mrs. Olivo? Any board discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfan.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez? Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Moving on, 825, finance portion of the agenda. As you know, we've made an adjustment. So for your racket, it would change 8.1 through 8.23 and 8.25 as we've pushed up 8.24. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 8.25?
Motion, John.
Mr. Ortega, Chavez, was that a second, sir? Thank you very much. Is there a sec, I mean, is there a discussion, any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfan.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Moving on to 9.3 in the Buildings and Grounds section of the agenda, which is for approvals 9.1 through 9.2. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 9.3? Mr. Alvarez, do I have a second?
Yes.
Mrs. Alvarez, good one. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfan.
Mrs. Alvarez? Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Olivo?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Committee reports. Anyone have committee reports this evening? Welcome back, right?
Yep.
Hope you had a good Hope you had a good summer. I did, I do have a committee report, because Mrs. Rocket is in here. Um, I'll, I'll enlighten you. So, uh, myself, Mr. Kennedy, uh, architects, the engineer. And the designer. I think that's how it played out, something of that nature. And Mrs. Rocket, we had a extensive, um. Meeting, uh, virtual meeting, um, where we discussed, uh, the fields. Um, I, I think everybody's really excited to get these fields going, they want to see something out of this referendum. So we, we kind of iron out a lot of those details. There is some stuff that it's going to come back for us to all review. Uh, but there is, there is, um, a lot of things happening at once. Um, I think Kennedy, um, knows we're asking a lot of questions. Uh, but other than that, uh, today I officially, uh, sent down to Borough Hall, um, the entire council, mayor, administrator. And their board attorney, their, uh, council attorney, mayor and council attorney. Um, kind of a rendering of what we're, we're, we proposed to do on the baseball field as we intended. To do, it, it comprises of irrigation. Um, I think the, the council has expressed they don't want turf, they would like some more natural upkeep of the fields, et cetera, et cetera. So just so the board knows, I sent out an email, I've copied, uh, our VP on it. And, uh, they, they've, uh, they've, they've, um. Uh, they, they've expressed they received it, they said they're going to look at it, so stay tuned, we should probably have a meet with them. Buildings and ground or board and mayor and council in the next week. Or week and a half, um, so we can iron out these details, get it into the N J D E P. And get these approvals going and move fairly quickly, fair enough, right? Um, and, and Mr. Erfan, Kennedy, I don't think anyone knows, but if you don't know, we have, uh, our first electric school bus. Um, we're still ironing out some details as to where, what, and where it's going to be placed. But that is an amazing step towards being more green in the state, um, and, and I think it'll save us. Substantial amount of money, it's not that we have a million buses, but we're, we're moving in a step forward for the little town that we are. That's all I have. Uh, if no one else has, can I move on to old business, eleven dot one? Does anyone have any old business? Moving on to twelve dot one on the agenda, any new business? No one? Next on the agenda, let me look. It's moving on to open, uh, fourteen dot one, open the floor to hearing of citizens on public. Uh, for the public on any item or discussion you'd like to have, do I have a motion?
Olivo.
Mrs. Olivo, Mrs. Alvarez, was that a second? All in favor?
Mr. Alvarez.
Mr. Alvarez, I'm sorry. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's any member of the public who would like to address us, please do so, state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Does he have a microphone?
My name is Bill Barnaskis, my address is five forty-five Solis Court, Lindhurst. The, uh. The reason why I'm here is I'm a member of the Bergen County Special Services Board of Education. I am also a member of the, uh, Bergen County School Boards Association Executive Committee. I represent District Five, which Bogota is in, and most of South Bergen. And, uh, we've recently, at the county level, set our goals for the year. And set our objects and our schedule for meetings and such. And as a personal goal, what I'm doing is, rather than just finding out that you have somebody on the county association at the executive. Committee, uh, it's via email or a phone call, uh, I decided to go out and go to all the different boards in person. This has nothing to do with me retiring and my wife wanting me out of the house. That, that is a rumor. Um, but I found it beneficial to get out and let people know that you do have somebody on the county level now. Uh, the Bergen County, the State School Boards Association offers a ton of different services available to you. Now, uh, when I was a member of the Lindhurst Board for nine years, and I'm on my eighth year in the county, uh, special services. What I found to be interesting is, and I'm not saying it's here, but what I am saying is that many of the boards I went to, I found that there were individuals on the boards. Who may not know all the different services that are available, uh, from the state association. Whether it's an advocacy, legislation, training, as an example, Matt Lee is the county, uh, field ref for, uh. This, the county, I don't know if he's been out here to do services and programs, but he's really good, and you have all these services available to you. And I strongly suggest that you take advantage of them. Uh, now, the state association has constituent levels at the county. Uh, and the reason for that is is the interest in Bergen County, maybe somewhat different than Cumberland or Salem or Gloucester. Uh, within the county of Bergen, because it is such a large county, there's seventy towns or something like that. Uh, we've split it up into different districts, so if you have a question, uh. You can come to me and we can try to represent, uh, what your interests are. Now, one of the things I find interesting about going out and, uh. Attending different meetings and to congratulate Mr. Miranda, Mr. Kennedy. It's, and the, the whole board, it's really interesting to hear you went through C U S A C and you got your first round through. It's, I heard that you got a referendum passed, which is wonderful, good stuff. And also that your test scores are going up, those are all good things. Now, my suggestion is always that, uh, you can as a board learn from other boards, but other boards can also learn from you. So I really suggest that you get involved as much as you can with the state and county association, uh, so that. You can brag a little with the people up county about how your test scores. Or can be held up against anyone else and the good job that you're doing here, and I, I sincerely mean that. Uh, the county association is having its next meeting sometime in October, I don't know the date off the top of my head, but it's going to be at. Uh, I believe it's Biagio's in Hackensack is the name of the place, but there'll be something you'll receive on email concerning that. Uh, what we've done over the years is we used to have, uh, a meeting with a topic. And what we found is that, that's not bad, but what happens if all the people in the county aren't interested in that topic? So what we do is we have one overarching subject that we're going to address either through an individual or a panel discussion. And then we have different breakout sessions, so we attract as many people as we can. These meetings are done in person or they can be done online. Uh, either way, but I always suggest that you go in person, because there's nothing like getting out after the pandemic and. Uh, meeting all your peers from around the state, and that's it. If you go on the, the School Boards Association, uh, webpage and you go to the very end and you see meetings, you'll see. Uh, you go down, you'll see Bergen County School Boards Association, there's a link to my name, Bill Barnaskis, don't worry about spelling it, just say Bill and they'll know who it is. Uh, but you're going to get in touch with me, but again, I just want to let you know that you have a lot of resources out there. And available and you use them, uh, and it's amazing how much people sometimes don't realize. For instance, one of the features that the state offers that's still available is that every three, maybe four years, they'll review your policy manager. To make sure it's current. Uh, they'll do all sorts of stuff, if you need sample, uh, policies to be set. If you need assistance to referenda that you may be putting forward, it's really a lot of stuff, I encourage you to take advantage of it. And I encourage you also to go to the county meeting. Uh, that's all I have and hope to see you at the county meeting and at workshop in October.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
We truly appreciate that. Anyone else?
Linda Mitracas, two twenty-five Walnut Avenue, um, good evening to everyone. First of all, I want to commend Mr. Calero and Ryan and Victor for the work that they do, they're, they were there today at middle school. But anytime we need help throughout the year, they're just really top-notch professionals, I want to thank you. Really, I really, really appreciate it. Um, just a question, I am a sixth grade math and science teacher, new, new top, a newer job. And I just had a question in terms of our middle school nurse, if that's been put in place yet. We have Mrs. Mulder last year, who was really an integral part of not only taking care of our phys, the physical well-being of our children. But also stepped up in different clubs and really is a, a very important part of our, um, school family. So I'm just wondering if that has been put in place, I didn't see it on the agenda, so I just wanted to ask what the status is for Mrs. Mulder. And I appreciate all your efforts and thank you so much, have a good night.
Thank you. So what I can say on that is that, um, we did, uh, hire through an agency and to. Um, hire as a Bogota, um, staff member. There's some hoops that we have to jump, jump through right now, and we have started that process and we are questioning some of the numbers, but. It's a big number if we take one of those people and we're calculating. I don't know if I can even speak on her.
It's a personnel issue, we have to. Yeah, she, we can't speak on.
But, yeah, I'm, we're on top of that one hundred percent, because she is good people.
Yeah, thank you, she really has been an, an asset to our school, and I thank you so much for your support, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Marilyn?
Hi, yes, I'm Marilyn Arias Arguejo, three ninety-two Elm Avenue here in Bogota. Um, my question is around the high school, my son is going into eighth grade. And I'm wondering if there's going to be like, uh, a meet and greet or an open house for the parents to come. Um, see the high school, meet the teachers, meet the new principal. Um, I haven't seen any communication surrounding that, so just wanted to bring that up.
I, I know, uh, yes, I, I believe on Thursday at ten-thirty, uh, I, I'm pretty sure I've saw emails sent out.
That's for the kids.
Oh, you're saying for the parents?
Uh, for the parents, is there going to be an open house for the parents for us to come? Meet the teachers and, and see where our kids are going to be now.
Yes, in September, there's always a back-to-school night at all the buildings, and there is one for the high school. Um, but if you would like to come up and meet the principal, I mean, we're in, so, uh, you can schedule that, uh, that's not a problem.
Okay, I appreciate you, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Anyone else? Do I have a motion to close hearing on citizen remarks?
Motion?
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second? Mrs. Alvarez, that was a second?
Yes.
Thank you very much, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion to close, I mean, to adjourn this meeting?
Olivo.
Mrs. Olivo, Mrs. Cruz, is that a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone.